Okay, the time being 7:00 PM. Trish, is it Matthews?
Yes.
Request a special permit pursuant to the code of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 316, Table 3-1, table abuses, Use L-10, and Section 322 to allow a wellness meditation center as a home occupation at 11 Margaret Road. Property is located in the R-15 residential zoning district and is not located in any restrictive overlay district. Floor is yours. Well, actually, let me explain. We're a board of, actually, we're a board of five, but only four of us are here right now. All of us will participate. Only Dave, Kim, and I are authorized, you know, to vote. And we'll explain other things as we go along or finish.
Okay.
But floor is yours.
Oh, okay. So, hi, I'm Trish. This is my sister Bobby.
Hi.
My husband Keith. And I have been in business for the Healing Moon for 20 years. I started out of my home in Norwood and then in Norwood Center for a few years. And then I moved my residency to Foxborough. And then, pretty much after one year of doing that, I knew this is where I'm staying. So I moved the business here to 34 School Street. Loved it there. Planned on staying there. Unfortunately, COVID happened and financially just couldn't do the rent there. It was a pretty large space. And I had other coworkers there as well. So with a lot of thought, I decided that I wanted to downsize and go back to a small practice like I had when I was at home originally, just with myself, and make life simple and more affordable of a space working out of my home. And so that's kind of, you know, been what I've forced to do as far as the COVID situation, unfortunately, but also what I am kind of excited to do as well and focus more on my clients instead of a large center again.
So in downsizing, will you be the only employee?
Yes, I never had employees.
You'll be the only person? You won't employ anybody?
Yes. My sister lives right next door and she sees like one or two clients a month, if that. She has a full-time job now, so she may or may not do that.
I'm not sure if I'm going to, yeah.
But not as an employee of yours, then?
No, 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 nope, nope. I never do that.
Okay. And how many clients did you, would you expect to see on a daily basis?
Well, because of COVID, I really want to transition to do more, perhaps, of virtual. But if I do see clients, you know, out of the home, anywhere from one to three clients, depending on how well it goes, three to four to five days a week. So that could range from five to 10 clients, we'll say.
Mm-hmm. And between what hours?
Um, starting at nine and usually I like to don't see anyone later than four o'clock. So my last client would end at five. Typically, I see morning clients.
So each session with a client is about an hour?
About an hour and a half.
Oh, okay.
And I spread, yeah, especially now. But I always keep time in between, so there's not a lot of overlap. But now, especially with COVID, I'll have to do that. And I have situation where they'll have to text me when they arrive and wait in their car because I need to clean and sanitize the space. And then...
So in other words, if you're seeing a client, say, at nine o'clock, you get done around 10:30?
Next person won't be coming until about 11:00.
Okay, so there, and there's parking within your driveway, I think you were saying, you're later?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So there wouldn't be two cars in any one time in the driveway?
Uh, correct.
Well, maybe yours, but not two?
Yeah, it's a three-car driveway, so two people could fit in it besides my car.
Okay. And about, I had trouble, you know, reading, so I'm not sure if there are feet markers on here, but about how big is the room that you plan on using?
Um, it is the, was the garage and it was redone about 10 years ago when my mom moved in, so it is approximately, let's see. Oh, yeah, I can see why you had a hard time. Those blueprints.
Part of it's my eyes, but...
Yeah, it's about 15 by 25, I would say, including the bathroom.
Possibly 30.
And then this, part of it is a, you think 30?
Oh, including the bathroom.
Yeah, including the bathroom. And then there's a back hallway that wouldn't necessarily be used, but more for storage for things for the space and as an emergency exit.
So you said, what, 15 by 30?
Yes.
Okay, that's 300, 450. Yeah, it's less than 40%. The square footage of the whole house is 1,830. Yep, so, okay.
So would this be one treatment room? Barney?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, you can see it though.
And there is a door right off the driveway that goes right into that room?
Yeah, entrance, outdoor entrance, which is...
A direct entrance from the outside, rather than...
Yes.
Exactly.
Which I did not have in Norwood, so this will be so lovely, so much easier. And it has a bathroom right off of it as well.
Um, are you planning on putting a sign out front?
Not a professional sign, anything like that. What I would, I didn't in my old space either because I really work by word of mouth. I don't want people, you know, coming by. I've always been by appointment only, even when I have the center uptown. So what I'll do is just so people can find me in the beginning, after not coming, I want to do like one of the signs that they, I have, you know, the senior signs right now for the seniors.
The graduates.
Yeah, the graduates. I have one for my niece and I'm just want to do something like that, just so they know, you know, the Healing Moon, so they can locate me. And when I'm not working, I don't want it there. I'm someone that kind of would prefer not to have a sign permanently at all. So when I'm going to see clients that morning, I'll put it there.
Okay. I mean, as a home occupation, you're entitled to a sign. The size is limited.
Okay.
But you are entitled to it.
Okay, thank you for that. I really don't think I want one, though.
Okay.
I have a question, just to clarify for me. Could you explain, Barney, the difference between intensive versus non-intensive home occupation?
Um, the way I always looked at it is, without even looking at the bylaw, because there are some distinctions, intensive would be where you would have people coming to the, to the house. For example, if I wanted to have a law practice, I would have clients come there. Non-intensive would be pretty much what I'm doing right now. I'm doing some work from home.
Okay.
What you were doing before. Dave was doing work from home, but he didn't have clients come, come to the house.
Thank you.
That, to me, would be the big difference without looking at the specifics.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the big difference.
Yep, that's the way I look at it. You know, and the intention when we set that up was so that there wouldn't be a lot of, potentially could be frivolous complaints, you know, to the building commissioner and whatnot, so it's kind of lay out there.
Okay.
So if you were to do all your work from home and just interact by, you know, by computer and telephone?
It's non-intensive.
You know, I would consider that non-intensive.
Yeah, okay.
But if you were to have clients come to the house or customers or what have you, that would be intensive.
Okay, thank you.
So whereas it's intensive, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Big question.
Mm-hmm.
What is the practice about? I have no idea.
I was waiting for one of you to ask that. So Reiki...
And these guys all know, it's just me.
So Reiki is a form of energy healing that basically helps people to relax. I focus more on my practice, people with anxiety, depression, and people that want to just feel good in general. But it is used in hospitals, especially, you know, in Boston. And I do work with people who are going through cancer treatment, just to mostly help their anxiety and so forth, to help support them through that. So it is something really for everybody because you have someone that might be coming to me for anxiety. And I do work with children, which I absolutely love, working with children. And it helps them, you know, with any, anything from like bullying, from stress with schoolwork, self-place stress, divorce, anything. So, and of course, adults have their own set of stresses. I don't know any adult who doesn't. So it really is helpful for that more than anything. And people are dressed, it's not like massage. They stay dressed and they lay on a treatment table. And I put my hands over them. I don't have to touch, I can put my hands over or I can touch. And I also will walk them through, do a guided meditation with them to help them relax. And I also give suggestions for help them to stay balanced, like in between sessions, different techniques that they can do. And every session's kind of, you know, geared to each individual and what they might need.
Is there a licensing requirement the state has or...?
Nope, you just have to be certified in it within the field.
Uh-huh. So there's an association or...
There is an association, but I did not join, for my own reasons.
But who would, who would do the certification, then? Who certifies?
Um, I actually went to, oh my God, my mind, because you put me on the spot, I cannot think, in Abington, Finding Inner Peace, oh my gosh. Maureen Spencer.
My, uh, my wife did this for a while, not as a career, but she went through the, what you just described, and I guess was given a certificate or something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And she would do a little bit of it at the hospital, she was a nurse, so she would do...
Yes, a lot of nurses do it.
And, uh, you know, friends occasionally, but...
Yep.
Wasn't any kind of way to make money off of it. Pretty, uh, you know, just not much to it, really, in terms of what you see, you know?
Yeah.
People love it, so...
Yeah.
And most of your clients come from referrals or word of mouth?
Yes, they do, yeah. I do, you know, I'm on the webs, I have a website and stuff, but the majority, I would say 90% of my clients are referrals. I've been doing it for 20 years, so that's, the majority of them are referrals. And marketing, but at this point, it's...
Mostly referrals.
Yeah. And a lot of the clients that I have, I've had for, since I, some were from my home when I originally started, so I think that's a, I take that as a good sign.
Anyone else with any questions? I think I've asked all that I could think of.
I do have one question, or more of a clarification. So you had said, I'm looking at your application, so you had said that you'd be seeing one to three clients per day, which is in the application of what you said. The application says seeing clients four days a week, but I think you said you would be seeing clients three or four or five days a week?
Yeah, I probably won't do five. I guess, um, yeah, I don't do five. I don't know why I said that. I think I'm just nervous when I...
Okay, just, we just want to make sure that we're very specific and we want to understand what you're asking.
Right, I gotcha, yeah. I usually do, when I was working up at the center, I was only doing three clients a day because I really can't do much more than that. And I do want to, because of COVID, really, when I go back to work, start pushing and opening my clients to distant healing, which is a new idea for them, but I think because COVID's still out there, I really want to have them try that and see if that's something that they would transition to instead. So I'm hoping that I'll do more of that instead of in-person clients. I think it'd just be better for everybody, but, so we'll see what happens with that.
Lots of adjusting going on right now.
Yes, yes.
Lots and lots.
So the three to four days a week, would that mostly be weekdays or could it be weekends?
Weekdays. I did do Saturdays, but now after having the last three and a half months off of Saturdays, I said to my husband, I'm thinking I don't want to work Saturdays anymore. I've worked Saturdays my entire life in this part of my career, the last 20 years, and then before that for my family business. So I'm thinking I would like to have Saturdays off. I don't know, if I can work it, yes, but usually during the week, never on Sundays. And if it's a Saturday, it's Saturday morning, I'm done and over with.
Never on Sunday was a movie.
With what?
A movie.
Movie.
It was a movie.
With, um...
Oh.
If anybody can think who the principal actress was.
Was it Bob or Streisand?
No.
No?
I think it was Melina Mercury.
Wow.
I'm showing my age.
We love old movies, so my mom got us into them.
The thing about the days, and we, I think...
I better check that.
...we can pretty much do what you want on the days, so you're held to that. So if we don't put Saturday down, then you can't do Saturday.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, you know...
So then let's put Saturday down, for sure.
Okay, Monday to Saturday, so I think we only usually get hung up if we're starting to talk about Sundays.
I see, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Now, if we weren't jumping for joy about this, then we would cut your days down, but...
Yeah.
So would either of you like to say something in support or, you're not going to say anything in opposition, I don't think?
I, no, and...
He wants me to get back to work, are you kidding?
I actually live next door, so I'm one of the neighbors too, so...
And the reason why I came to Foxborough.
Yes, guilty, because I've been here for about 25 years.
Were you one of the tennis players? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
Well, there's a variance, uh...
Oh.
Back there.
I did use that, the tennis courts.
And some of the neighbors got together and pulled the land together and made a tennis court, and they had to come into us.
Oh.
Then they come back years later and they're old and hobbled and look like they've had it because their tennis playing days are over.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we undid what we did.
They did, yes. We would have, my husband and I would have loved to have had the chance to purchase that land. It's right behind us.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we used the courts, but he had always given, Mr. Spears, I guess, at the Mayflower or Mayfair Apartments, the right of first refusal. And so he did want the property, so, yeah.
Well, I'm the guy on the board that's been around forever with a long memory. Barney's been around for a...
Yeah, I don't remember that, so that was a long time.
But I, when I drove, we generally do a drive-by. So when I went by your house a week or so ago and I pulled up in front of it and I'm saying, damn, this looks familiar, you know, so I came back and we've got records, you know?
But that was from the case initially that you had that you sent us?
The initial case, yeah.
Yeah.
And I saw the tennis thing, yeah.
Yeah, you have good memory.
That's behind your house.
And I was, just told you the whole story, you know?
Yes.
And it was funny when they came back to undo it because...
I know.
They're all older and they're not playing tennis anymore.
Nobody played. Nope, none of them used it. We did when we moved in, yeah, which I thought it was great, but...
So your first name is Bobby?
Yes.
And last?
Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S.
And which, which, which Margaret?
Nine.
Nine, okay. Go ahead, if you have anything to say, please say it.
No, I'm just all for it, having worked there and knowing what both Reiki and meditation can do for people, like Trish said, with, it helps immensely with anxiety and depression, but it also helps with pain management, too, and just overall well-being. So I highly support it. And, and I, having worked with Trish for so long, just know how professional she is.
Okay. And you're Mr. Vega, correct?
Keith Vega, yes.
Yep, and you wanted to go back to work.
Yeah, I do. I actually do have something to say, as she spoke before, in our home in Norwood, she did that from there, just after we got married. And the people that come, her clients, tend to be quiet, they don't, they don't, you know, they're not any type of problem clients or anything. And there was never an issue in the neighborhood when she was doing it there. There was never, you know, too many cars or anything like that, so I don't see it being a burden on the neighborhood at all.
Mm-hmm, okay, great. So we did get, obviously, there's nobody else here. Nobody is watching us. So there's no other person to express any in-person or virtually, you know, support or opposition. We did get the letters that you provided to Diana. I think there are 10 of them altogether.
Yeah, they're very nice, some I saw them.
Several of them are from, and ordinarily, I would read these into the record. My glasses keep fogging up.
Mine, too.
And my voice would go, so I'm not going to do it, and I'm not going to ask anybody else to do it, but of the 10 letters, and everybody's seen them, or at least...
Yes.
Several of them are from former clients, or maybe present clients as well. All spoke very highly of you as an individual and of you as a practitioner. The letters that I find most important are the ones that we receive from your neighbors. So we had letters in favor from Constan Gonzalez, who's at 7 Margaret, from Teresa and Michael Federico, who are at 8 Margaret, from Kathleen Gonzalez, she didn't say her address, is she living with Connie or...
Yes.
Yes, so she's at 7.
So she's also at that address?
Correct.
And from Christopher Howard, who, even though he doesn't say his address, I checked, he's at 101 Chestnut Street. So all are neighbors, some of them are rebutters, I would imagine, or just across the street, all in favor. And to me, those letters are more important than, although the other ones are important as well. The fact that you have support from your neighbors, I think, is important. So anybody else have any other questions or, you close the public portion?
I move to close the public portion of the...
Second. Okay, all in favor? Okay. This is as simple and clean and appropriate, I think.
Yeah, I think we, you know, I would make a motion, but I'll say beforehand, we would approve it with the standard conditions that we put on these things.
Yeah, we'll define what they are.
You know, because this is not a separate structure and all that stuff, so, you know, what...
So the first condition we typically impose, impose is that the occupation always complies with the specific provisions within the bylaw. And I suspect you've probably seen them?
Um, I'm not sure.
Okay, so let me just read it, you know, to you. So Section 3.2.2 of the bylaw says that home occupation is subject to the following standards. Business can't produce noise or other objectionable characteristics beyond the limit of the lot. The area devoted to the home occupation can't exceed 40% of the habitable floor area of the principal residence. Necessary lawn street parking is provided. No more than two persons, in addition to family members, who reside in the residence may be employed within the, within the home occupation. Storage of material or products outside of the residence is prohibited. And making of external structure, structural alterations to the residence is prohibited. And you're not, you're not planning on that either. The second condition would be that performance of the occupation is restricted to, we said Monday to Saturday, between the hours of 9:00 AM and, you said with what, you'd be finished around 5:00?
9:00 to 5:00.
9:00 to 5:00?
Yeah.
Third would be not more than one client would be provided in services in connection with the business at any single time. Four is that, let me ask you a question. Should we attach a copy of the plan to the decision? Showing where the occupation is going to be conducted?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Because it shows where it is, probably.
So why don't we say that four is that the occupation is going to be performed in the portion of the residence that showed on the plan? I think that's it.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Oh, only one motor vehicle for a client is to be parked on the property any one time. Anything else anybody have?
No.
Now, even though you indicated you didn't want a sign, I'll probably put something in the decision that'll reference what the sign requirements are, so that if you, and anytime in the future do want to do that, you'll know exactly...
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
Exactly what it is, okay? Motion with those as conditions?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? So we'll write up a decision and sign it. I'm going to try to get done before the end of the weekend.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll send it to the other members of the board, you know, for comment, you know, assuming there is none, probably sometime middle of next week, Diana? Towards the end of the week, we'll be ready to sign. After it's signed, Diana will provide a copy to the town clerk, he'll certify it, you'll be notified. And then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Okay.
Once that appeal period runs, you're, you're home free.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you know what, what is the appeal period? I'm just curious. How long is the appeal?
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
Twenty days, okay.
Twenty calendar days.
Calendar days, okay. Thank you.
So hopefully, all that can be done next week, so the appeal period starts, say, around Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
And then you'll need to file a copy of the decision with the Registry of Deeds up in Norwood.
After the 20 days?
Yeah.
And it'll be stamped and everything, so you want to make sure it's all stamped here before you go there.
Once, and then once that's filed at the Registry of Deeds, is it okay? Or then do we have to wait another waiting period after that, do you know?
Diana, if something of this nature, do they have to go back to building commissioner?
They're supposed to bring the book, when you go to the Registry of Deeds, they file it and they put a stamp on it that gives you a book and a page. You need the book and a page to go to the building department. But I don't think, do they have to go to the building department?
Yeah, for this, I don't think so.
Only you go to the building department and get your permit, but...
Yeah, I don't know if...
I don't know, I don't think you do that with a home occupation.
What about town clerk's office?
The town clerk, they don't, they can get, I don't even take back the book and page number, so...
Best thing to do is if you go to the Registry of Deeds, give Diana a call and hopefully she'll have the answer.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
And if they stamp it, it's not needed, so...
Yeah. Now, you're doing business under the name of the Healing Moon?
Yes.
So do you have a DBA from the town for that?
Um...
From town clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
So maybe they attach, maybe the town clerk would attach it somehow to her business or to your...
Sign out there and everything, I forget.
Yes.
Yeah, what you'll need to do, I think you'll, at the very least, need to let the town clerk's office know that you're no longer at 34 School Street, but rather at Margaret Road.
Okay.
That's it, if you have any questions?
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I just have to say, the building is beautiful.
It's lovely, right now.
We were in, I was in it earlier this week and, oh, it's gorgeous.
What building, I'm sorry?
This building.
Oh, this building, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't been in it.
I've been coming here for a couple of years, so...
Yeah, yeah. I haven't needed to be inside, I know you have, honey, but...
Nice to know this one.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
My little blurb that I have written that I send to people, it says that they're supposed to bring the stamped copy to the building commissioner just to prove that it was filed before they can occupy their home occupation. I don't think they would get anything from the building department, just checking.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. I have copies of our plan. My name is Marcia Pereira, I'm the property manager at the Sylvan in Foxborough. Do you need a copy of this as well?
Um, I printed one for myself, but...
Oh, super. May I pass this down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just by way of background, were you on the board when we approved the permit?
I was on the board, but I was not a voting member at that point.
Okay.
But I sat through many of the meetings.
So, this is education, I guess, for, for Lorraine and, and for you.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we approved a comprehensive permit in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Five buildings, well, five apartment buildings, all, all of which are four stories. I think there were thirteen garages or twelve garages and a, and a clubhouse?
We have forty-one garages.
Forty-one garages?
Yes.
Okay, because I remember that Bill Casparra, who was then the building commissioner, said they, he had to issue eighteen separate building permits.
Yeah.
So, I, I thought that would be for the apartments, for the clubhouse, and then for all the garages, but you've got a lot of units there.
Two hundred and forty-eight.
Two hundred and forty-eight, okay. Well, you have two hundred and forty-eight apartment units.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you've got a lot of structures on the property. Twenty-five percent are, are affordable.
Mm-hmm.
Again, we, we approved the comprehensive permit in two thousand and fifteen. It was painful in a lot of respects. We had a lot of opposition.
And litigation. Sorry, and litigation.
And litigation, right. We were sued.
I'm surprised.
The developer and the three of us, I think Neil was on the board and Chris was on the board then, we, we were all, all sued. The case was settled. I don't think we ever were told what the terms of the settlement were. I suspect it just involved the, the Hanover Company.
Mm-hmm.
In, I don't know when the development was finally constructed. I've been up there twice since you and I spoke.
Right.
And I think it's beautiful.
Thank you.
I was really pleased with the, you know, with, with the work that they did, that they did, and with the work that your company is doing in keeping it up. I haven't seen any of the apartments. Dave was saying before he's been inside, and it's, it's, it's very attractive. You're fully occupied?
No, right now we're ninety-three percent occupied and almost ninety-seven percent leased.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
In November, this past November, the Hanover Company sold the property to an entity that is, as far as I can tell, a subsidiary, maybe down the line, but a subsidiary of Metropolitan Life Insurance Company.
Correct. It's part of their REIT.
And is it Bezuto?
Yes.
Management is.
I work for Bezuto.
Is the property manager.
Mm-hmm.
So, on June ninth, and I think everybody's seen the correspondence, Marcia wrote a letter, you know, to me at the prompting of Bill Casparra, you know, relative to the proposal that we're going to discuss in a few minutes. We received, the board received it on the sixteenth. I tried, I think that you and I spoke around the twentieth, and then there was the correspondence that we had back and forth that day, you know, by, by email. On July first, Bill and I toured, toured the site. You were not there, but one of your maintenance people.
Right, I had a funeral.
Took us around. And so, we saw exactly where the facility is going to be, to be situated. And with that, I'll let you, as my mask keeps falling down, I'll let you proceed.
Uh, well, it's not much to, really, I think you've covered all of the background information. What we propose to do, we'd like to do with the property is build a dog park, eighty feet by thirty-five feet, located behind building five, the garages. It's, it's a nice, flat space. It's, you know, kind of tucked away in the back of the property. A property of this caliber typically does have a, a dog park, and Hanover never put one in or didn't add it as part of the comprehensive permit. So, this is something that was discussed at sale and has been budgeted by MetLife. It's something that the residents really would like to have. As a property manager, I would like to have it as well. It's just a nice amenity to offer folks living in, you know, that's, that caliber community, because it really is a luxury apartment complex. So, again, eighty by thirty-five feet, fenced, six foot. I originally thought it was five foot, but the commercial grade fence is actually six feet with appropriate egress for anyone that has mobility issues. We're proposing to put in artificial turf. That area is irrigated, so we would have some sort of water feature. Nothing elaborate, more just, you know, for pet owners to fill perhaps a dog dish or whatever, but nothing too elaborate. Couple of toys, couple of jumpy's, obviously pet waste stations, a bench for folks to sit down while their pets run around and exercise. Really, and that, that's really it. I mean, the prep of the area is not too much, because it's pretty flat. There is one tree. I will, I will not remove it. I'm going to move it to a different part of the property. It's a lovely pine. I'm all about, you know, saving things, you know, it, there's nothing wrong with the tree. It's lovely. We'll find a home for it somewhere else. But again, it's pretty, it's pretty straight. The grade is pretty minimal. We're looking at, obviously, the correct amount of crushed stone and stoned us so that there's proper drainage for the turf. The contractor that I'd like, that won the bid, is Four Seasons out of Bellingham. He actually did a dog park for me at a property that I managed in Bellingham, called the Charles Bellingham. Very professional. They do great work. I, you know, don't anticipate any issues with the construction of, of the job. We, we expect that would take about ten to fourteen days. So, that's, that's about it.
What, what kind of fence?
Uh, right now, he's spent a six-foot, commercial-grade, eight-gauge chain link fence.
Are you planning on lighting?
We are, we have, it's, the area of the dog park is located behind garages, so we would have motion sensor lighting that would face away from the residential units. And it's far enough away from the road, so there wouldn't be any impact to any local residents. You know, perhaps two or three, just to have it lit for safety reasons as well.
And as far as hours of use, any specific?
No, um, I mean, right now with COVID, I don't think that would be open, maybe in phase three, to be honest with you. I'm not even sure if dog parks are allowed to be open yet, and, because it's been a nonentity for us. But typically, our dog parks are open twenty-four hours. And with lighting, it, it would, you know, I'd be okay with that, unless the board has an issue with that.
I do have a question. I can't, I can't, I drove there today, but I couldn't tell. So, what is on this side?
Highway.
It's the highway, yeah.
That is the highway, or the off-ramp, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if it's lit?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking how.
There's a berm that kind of goes up, so I would, you know, don't think that it would impact any cars coming off. Clearly, if it did, then we wouldn't be able to light it, because we know better.
Right. And I'm, I don't, how about the light heading over here to the closest neighbor?
Berm over here as well.
Yeah. The property is kind of built with berms all over the place.
Right, right. So, I'm, I'm just thinking, like, let's say the, the Richardsons.
So, this is down, what I would call, because the top of the berms, as you go around, are also part of the land.
Right.
So, this is going to be at the bottom of the berms, not at the top of any berm.
Correct, that's right.
Because those berms, in many cases, are the back of some of the houses on High Street?
Yeah, South High.
South High, right. This particular location was selected, again, because it does not, there are no residents behind it.
Mm-hmm. And are these residences here, on the other side of South?
Down here?
On these lots right here are residences right across from that location, across South High Street.
Yeah, it's a hundred and eighty feet, hundred and seventy feet away.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, when, when Bill and I went, went up there, Bill's big concern was to make certain that this would be as least visible to any of the South High Street neighbors as, as possible. And, you know, the fact that you've got, you know, a garage on, on one side of it, you know, the highway on the other, and the berm over here, and we took a ride on South High Street. At, at the very end, it ends at a cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, clearly, you could probably, if, if you get out, see the, you know, the, the facility. But, but Bill felt comfortable with, with location, that it wouldn't be a nuisance to any of the South High Street neighbors.
I think my concern would be the noise from it. You know, given the experience we had on Mill Street in the past with a major lawsuit against the town for that dog park due to noise issues were a big factor. And those homes were not close.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's really my concern, and makes this, in my mind, something major, majorly different to the neighborhood than the residential aspect of it. Again, it's based on, you know, the issues that we had with the location of that last dog park.
Mm-hmm. How many dogs were, would you say, or do you, do you know that would?
Um, I was there a couple of times, and, you know, again, my experience was, as soon as I would walk up to the dog park, dogs would start barking. And, you know, certainly they're friendly, but, you know, dogs would start barking. And the homes, you know, where the Coacasset River Park is, the homes were probably quite a few hundred feet away, and the noise was carrying and, and very problematic there.
So, right now, we only have about twenty-three dogs that are at the property.
Yeah.
Most are cats.
I would say the most I probably ever saw were maybe eight, ten, when I was there.
That's interesting. In Bellingham, our, our dog park abutted the town manager for the town of Bellingham, I'm sorry, excuse me, the town of Medway. He lived literally, it was his backyard. And I worked there for four years, and I, we never had a complaint. So, that's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. We had a tremendous lawsuit against the town. It cost the town over eighty thousand dollars.
We have, um, I mean, we have the dogs anyway, so if people are walking the property with their pets, and we certainly have never had any, I think we've only had one resident complaint, and it was snow removal. It had nothing to do with pets or, which is nice, because, you know, oftentimes you, we are, we, we are sensitive to the fact that we do have folks that are close by.
So, we're just to make a determination, right? Either that we don't, I don't know what the right word is, but we don't consider this to be significant, let it go, or we feel that we should have a hearing on it.
Right.
And invite the butters in and, you know, and they, of course, they would be invited. We're not necessarily inviting them, but it would be a public notice and all that stuff. So.
So, the decision we have to make is whether it's insubstantial, in which case it's modified, or substantial, in which case we have to hold a public hearing. And the, the regulations do, and I'll read it. So, they, they do talk about matters that generally will be substantial changes, which would be an increase of more than ten percent in the height of buildings, increase of more than ten percent in the number of housing units proposed, reduction in the size of the site of more than ten percent in excess of any decrease in the number of housing units proposed, a change in building type, or a change from one form of housing tenure to another. And again, it's, it's, those are matters that are generally considered to be substantial. It doesn't mean that they're the only matters. It matters that generally are not substantial would be a reduction in the number of the housing units proposed, a decrease of less than ten percent in the floor area of individual units, a change in the number of bedrooms within individual units. If those changes do not alter the overall bedroom count of the proposed housing by more than ten percent, a change in the color or style of material is used, or a change in the financing program under which the applicant plans to receive a subsidy, if the change affects no other aspect of the proposal. So, again, those are both substantial and substantial, that, not the only factors, but I think all of them speak towards the, the housing.
Mm-hmm.
And not necessarily towards, you know, something of this nature, which doesn't mean that we can't decide that it's substantial. Again, if we do decide it's substantial, then it's, then we have to hold a public hearing on the matter.
Now, we, we've done, I think, three others, two involving fencing on the Lynch property.
Right.
And then, I guess this might have.
We did also one on.
The little land swap. I can't remember which.
Yeah, and then we also did one on Joe Lynch's other, other property that went off of Community Way.
Okay, yeah. So, but those are the fences, I think. Community Way, what was that? Was that a fence too? Change in the fence?
Now, one of them I screwed up on, as Kim will remember.
Yeah, that's what we, and those were not substantial.
Insubstantial first, not insub, one of the affordable and non-affordable.
Oh, oh, oh.
And then there was a, another aspect of it, which I can't recall. But we, we've had two fences with Joe, and the other one with Nadia was the land swap.
The land swap, yeah. Well.
And, and I, I, I think even if we were to decide that this was insubstantial, I don't think we're precluded from imposing conditions. So, for example, if we felt that it was inappropriate for it to be lit or to be open twenty-four hours a day, or, or if we felt, and this would really be a suggestion regardless, you know, the, the slats that you put in the chain link fence, whatever they, those vinyl slats are called, I think that would be appropriate, you know, to help reduce noise, you know, regardless.
Sure.
But I, I think we could impose reasonable conditions, even if we decided that this was insubstantial. And certainly, if we decided it was substantial, we hold a hearing. If we were to prove it, we handle, like any other matter, we can impose conditions.
So, would this be used by residents of the, of the complex only?
Yes.
And if, if we do impose conditions, I've written down the ones that I would want, that would be one of them, you know, that I would want.
That's, that's a given. We, we, we don't want people that don't live there on the property. It's a liability issue. So, that's an easy.
So.
That's easy.
Well, here's kind of where my feelings about the project, or what are we going to call it. It seems to me we should ask for the hearing, invite the butters. Let, let's hear what they have to say for input. And then we can formalize also with the applicant any rules or operational things that you're going to do. So, it doesn't give the appearance that this gets, hate to use this, slid in, you know what I'm saying?
Same.
I know we've got a large audience out there on television right now, but, but to, you know, allow their comments, we, we know they were, I just would not feel right about just doing this without giving them the opportunity.
I, I agree. I think that the neighborhood.
Maybe a painful night.
I, I hear you. But the neighborhood was certainly impacted by this development, and I certainly remember those meetings.
Yes.
And I do, I don't want them to think this is.
Maybe they feel better about it now that they've seen that the buildings don't tower over their homes and all these other things, but.
I, I think that's a great suggestion. Gives people the opportunity to at least be heard. And I think, you know, having conditions in place would be very helpful. Again, there were, the previous experience, there were limited hours, and there were no lights. But they didn't, it wasn't a similar security, like, you probably have lights for security there anyway.
I would suggest that the applicant, you know, come in with a kind of a proposal that includes any rules, regulations, requirements, whatever you want to call it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, and then if they're going to be posted or not, if they're going to be, so everybody that's, your tenants, they know what, here's the game.
Well, it's private property, so, sure.
Yeah, but here's the game. Well, if there's, but if there's no, it is private property, but the private property can potentially generate noise.
Sure.
Dogs getting loose, you know, and other aggravators that will get the neighbors not happy.
Yep. Well, we, we have, you know, we have rules that are incorporated now that are required to have a pet. You have a pet, it has to obviously be licensed. It has to have its, you know, a proper immunizations. We do not allow dogs off-leash. I mean, that's something that legal, you know, lawyers get involved when that happens. And fortunately, since November, I have, we have not had any issues. But, you know, so that's easy to come up with less rules, because we already have them.
Yeah.
So, so you would, the board is considering that this is a modification of the existing permit?
No, what we consider, what we would be considering is that the requested modification is a substantial revision of the permit.
Okay.
And what that requires is that we hold a public hearing within thirty days of that determination, and then we have forty days to issue a decision concerning the matter. So, our next meeting is within thirty days, isn't it?
Next meeting would be August twentieth. Okay.
But she'd have to get the paperwork in and the legal notices and all that, correct, Bonnie?
Yeah.
So, it may in fact be thirty days from the application being made?
No, it's from the determination.
Oh, from the determination.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if she even needs an application, because again, she, she made a request. She made a written request.
I need it at least in a butters list.
Yeah, you gotta, you're going to have to publish the hearing, right?
Yeah, I don't think she needs a, a formal application, because she's already made the request. But you do need it in a butters list.
So, I mean, if you request that, they usually take maybe five days at the most. I'd have to put it in the paper on the sixth, so the deadline is probably the thirty-first. So, I give you a couple of weeks.
But thirty days from tonight would be when?
That's what I'm trying to find on my calendar here.
Well, the meeting's four weeks from now, right?
Well, the me, yeah, the meeting is in five weeks. Four weeks from today is a planning board meeting, August thirteenth.
Sorry?
Four weeks from today is a planning board meeting of August thirteenth. They only meet once in August, and it's on the thirteenth.
Okay. Do we have anything else in for August?
No, but they have till the thirty-first.
One thing that you might want to do in anticipation of this hearing, if you could just put some stakes in the ground where, where it is.
Yeah.
So, anybody that wants to go see it, you know, you mark the four corners. I don't think it's got to be anything really elaborate.
Yeah, we can easily do that.
So, August thirteenth is twenty-eight days.
I'm not going to be here the, the thirteenth of August. Do we have a quorum? Do we have enough people?
You just can't have the meeting here, because. You just can't have the meeting here, because the planning board has this...
On the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth. The planning board's scheduled August meeting is the thirteenth. And I can't go, because I have to go to the planning board.
Can we request that the applicant does an extension until the twen, until our regularly scheduled meeting on the twentieth?
I don't have an issue with that. How quick, um, once we have the meeting and if all goes well, then what is the process? Because we are in New England and I can't do this if it's winter.
Then I'll, I'll, what I'll do at that point is draft a decision.
Okay.
That would reflect, you know, what the history has been.
Okay.
You would need to, well, even, even if we would, even if we were have, to have decided that this was insubstantial, you would be required to file that decision with the registry of deeds.
Okay.
But theoretically, um, you know, once we were to hold the hearing and approve it and you were to file the, you know, the, um, the, well, there would be an appeal period, but once you were to file with the registry, you'd be, you'd be okay.
Okay.
So, in theory, you would be able to start in September.
Okay.
You have a concern about getting the work done, the frost and all that?
Well, this, this property is owned by a REIT, and so the money is earmarked. Um, and I don't know if it's like state government where if you don't spend it, they take it away. I'm too new to the property. Uh, and I, you know, you're right. MetLife owns this property. It's a big, huge company, so I have to be able to provide them with the correct information. So, I just need to make sure that I'm giving them, that I'm understanding the process and the delays. Not delays, just, you know, the process.
Let me just think, think through. So, we would do it on the twentieth. Do you have the form for her to...
Yeah, but the assessors, it's a, the assessors.
No, no, it's signed for an extension?
I don't know if that, that kinda... Those are kind of written, like the hearing's already open, I think. I guess if you just put it under the original comprehensive permit.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I mean, that's a standard form we have.
Remember the number?
Um, it is fifteen oh four.
Is that the original case?
Yep.
Well, what it says here, comprehensive permit case twenty dash twenty-three. What is that?
That's, that's a statutory section.
That's the, uh, yeah, that's the, um, the state statute. That's like on the top of the paper.
The other one, yeah.
So, if you're looking at it, it looks like that's the permit number, but if you read the thing, I didn't, I didn't put a copy of the permit itself, but that's probably where she found that number, because it's, that's the CMR.
So, this is gonna go on August twentieth? Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
If I can make into an airplane, I'll send it over.
Yeah, there you go.
Let me just read it and then...
She needs to sign it, am I right?
Yeah.
Do you want me to sign this and return this to you?
Uh, you just give it to Diana. Yeah. Sign, please. So, I think we actually ought to make a, um, take a formal vote that we determine that the request is substantial.
Thank you.
I think that's all we need to do.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
So, what do I need to do in preparation? I'm sorry.
Hang on.
I move that we make a determination that the request is substantial.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So, what you need to do, again, Diana, I don't think she needs to do a formal application. If you feel more comfortable or you think Bob would require it, then...
I think Bob would require something.
Okay.
But I'm... Being a subsequent owner... Because that decision is under the Hanover Company.
Yeah, but it's, it applied to Hanover Company and its assessors and assigns.
It just has to reference that somehow, because Bob needs it to tie it back to...
Okay. So...
Might have to work on that.
Is, is the application online?
Yes.
Where would I find it?
Yes, if you go to the, um, the Town of Foxborough website, under Boards and Committees is the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then on the left-hand side is a column of, you know, minutes, agendas, and one of those is the ZBA application.
I'm sorry, the what? What is it?
It's, it's, it just says applications.
Okay, got it.
The, the website works better if you do it on a regular computer instead of trying to do it on your phone, like I'm trying to do now.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it on my phone. That's fine.
So, you'll also need a list of the butters?
Yeah, where do I get that?
Get that from the assessor's office. You can call them up or come in person. Just tell them we need a three-hundred-foot abutters list.
Then I send them a letter?
They have an application for you to fill out. The assessors do.
Okay.
But the, the abutters will be notified. Probably some of them will come in and want to look at the paperwork.
Yeah, I write up a, I write up a, a notice about the hearing and I send it to the abutters. You get one and all the abutters get one.
Okay.
And generate activity.
I guess you can't fill out a regular application. There is an other category. Just put it under that, I guess.
Okay. And... Cost?
And then we'll do this again on the twentieth of August.
Sure, with people.
One thing I think you ought to consider is, um, because if we approve it, you know, we would impose conditions. So... I don't have any problem with the chain link fence. I should, I would think it would need to have those slats. I would think six feet is appropriate.
Oh, six feet's fine, yeah, I think. Some, some post in the rules or hours or whatever.
I, I...
I don't think anything else comes to my mind, really.
I, I, I don't know. My, my, my personal thought is that twenty-four hours a day is, um, not appropriate. Not just for, not just concerned about the abutters, but also people who live in Building Five. If there, there are dogs, you know, yapping there at three in the morning.
Right. People walk their dogs at all hours of the night now.
Mm-hmm. Except that you're, you're talking about dogs that it might be, you know, running.
They're not gonna go to the dog park at night.
So...
They, they let their dogs right outside the door to do their business and then they walk right in. You can tell, because if you look at the entrance to all the buildings, the grass is dead.
But, but think about that, because that's something we may think about.
Sure.
We may get hit, we may get hit with questions. We gotta, if, if the neighbors show up and, you know...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you guys have more experience than I do.
But, but if they show up, they're gonna have questions.
Sure.
And we're gonna look to you for answers for most, you know, unless they're just inappropriate questions.
I mean, certainly, as, as we said before, one of the conditions I would want to oppose is that it's only dogs for, owned by people who reside there. Number of dogs at any one time?
I was wondering that.
I think there's a limit on what you can own, otherwise you're called a kennel.
I'm sorry?
There's a limit on the number of dogs you can own, otherwise there, there's a kennel requirement?
This isn't a kennel, though, is it?
Oh, no, but I was thinking how many dogs at a time, perhaps.
At a time in the park, is what you meant. Okay.
Because the more dogs you have them, I would imagine, the noisier they would be, because they're all happy to see each other.
It's, but you're, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's not, it's not a community dog park. So, people work during the day, people are there at night, you know, whatever. It's, I don't think we ever had more than...
You are, with two-hundred-and-fifty units, you are a community, you know.
Sure. We have twenty-three dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I just have the experience as a property manager, so, and I live in Medway. We have an enormous dog park that is one of the most popular things in this, in the town. So, I understand when I see dog parks and I see ten dogs in there, I get it, but it's not like that at all. But...
Well, we're partially just trying to anticipate what the neighbors are going to say. So, this is, so these are things that you're thinking about. We're not telling you, you know, this is what we are going to do necessarily.
Right.
We're just, I think, more asking you to just think about it and try to anticipate.
The Town of Foxborough has a history with dog parks.
Yes.
And it's not, if you're a dog owner, it's not exactly positive.
Okay.
Leave it at that, right?
Don't let that get out. People love their dogs.
Many people find that unusual.
Yeah.
What, what other issues arose with the, um...
I, I think...
That might benefit her to prepare?
Noise was a big concern, was really the big impact and, um...
Clean up, maybe.
I'm sorry?
Picking up after them.
Picking up dog waste, um, but I, I think there were occasions where, you know, people were getting bitten and then it becomes an issue.
Were there any insurance requirements that town imposed or should have imposed?
At the time, I don't recall there being, it was like a vol, it was being manned by volunteers and, um...
Definitely, you know, on size of this place, I'm sure they're gonna, they've got insurance. That was one of the other issues with this volunteer group that wanted to do this, you know.
Right.
Right, and this is private.
They had no means to do anything, probably didn't even understand half of what was being asked for.
Right. It was, I think, it was, it was really the, the noise and, you know, the evenings being barked at while you're sitting out on your deck in your home, you know, the, the neighbors did not like that.
Yeah, I think, you know, those would be my, my concerns then. You know, noise and, and going with noise is, is hours of operation.
Yeah.
I guess really that's about it, as far as I could think, you know.
So, I mean, then I would probably propose it, it's a dawn-to-dusk thing during daylight hours. I have no issue with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, you know, indicated whatever rules and regulations you have.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That there's a, there's a list of things that shows an element of control.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. That one's easy.
Okay, so...
Maybe we'll see nobody.
What else, Diana, does she need to do vis-à-vis you?
Generally, the administrative fee for a comprehensive permit is two hundred dollars, as opposed to where everything else is a hundred and fifty. But that's with other fees with the, you know, based on the number of apartments and such. So, do you want to treat it like comprehensive permit, two hundred dollars, or regular a hundred and fifty?
To me, it's an accessory use. I think. I don't know what the fee is for an accessory use.
That'd be a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
That's as low as it goes anyhow, right? Yeah.
So, the fees involved, so there, so there's that fee, you have to pay for the ad in the newspaper, which will be billed, you know, in the future, and, um...
I don't have a checkbook, so I need to get, yeah.
I don't know the amount until after I submit the ad.
Oh, no, no. If you're billing me, then that's, that's easy.
And, um, the assessors, they charge for the butters list. It's a, it's like maybe twenty dollars or something. So, those would be the fees involved.
Okay.
Got it.
So, any other questions you have, just, Diana will give you the answers.
Yeah, so, I would say the application, a plan, and like a narrative of...
Yep. I can do that. I will do that Monday.
All of that, yeah.
So, so just one final note.
Sure.
When I spoke with Marcia, um, you know, the first time, you know, concerning this, she said she wanted to make sure we do it to the T. So, you know, I think that, um, for a lot of reasons, this is doing it to the T. And it's probably, you know...
Fine.
You know, in your, your best interest.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. I mean, if we could just do this and then five years from now, we get, somebody comes in, we'll, you know...
Well, you have to, you're setting a precedent, so I completely understand.
Well, that's true. And then we could have the lodge, who I live near, and maybe they'd want a dog park. Well, that's a great idea.
They're actually owned by the same company.
There we go.
They don't have a dog park.
Not that I know of, and I've been over there a few times.
Yeah, interesting.
They do, they slid it in.
Do you also have a lodge, or...
No, no. No, it's, uh, we're both owned by the same part of the REIT. And then you have different funds and we're MCPF Foxborough and they're a different entity within MetLife, but they have the same, we have the same outside managers.
Yeah. Well, we've worked with the Hanover Company two or three times over the years and they're good to work with and we kind of know their routine, that they build them, they fill them, and then they move them on.
Yep, they do. And then they leave a lot of mess that I have to fix and take care of.
It's your specialty area.
They're not my favorite people right now.
Okay, so we'll see you...
Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate the direction and we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the weekend. It's beautiful out there.
You too.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have is the minutes I sent out the other day.
Review them in great detail and I move approval.
June.
I second.
All in favor? So, the new building commissioner started on Monday. You know, I did speak with him on Wednesday. I guess you, you've met him.
Yeah, well, I introduced myself today, but, um, he's been, yeah, I know he's been there since Monday. He hasn't really, um, gone around to the departments or anything.
You know, I spoke with him, you know, about tonight's applications and, you know, in, inasmuch as it was, you know, short notice for him, um, and I didn't think we, you know, we needed him.
He lives on the North Shore, am I right?
He lives in, um...
Chelmsford.
Chelmsford, I think, yeah.
That's the ride. Does he plan on staying there? Do you know if he's saying anything?
He said that, when, during the interview, he, he likes driving, so...
Well, he'll get a good drive, huh?
Yeah.
What's his name?
Mark Dupell.
Mark Dupell. Oh, yes, we had an email. I saw that. Okay.
Yeah, he wasn't around when I came in the other day. I asked about it, but he wasn't around. He was out of the building.
So, hopefully...
Bill's no longer part of any of this, right? He's going to Michigan.
Does?
He came to Michigan.
He came in yesterday to do whatever transfer, but, yeah, he said he's going away.
Yeah, he's going to camp in Michigan.
Well, he had said to me that he couldn't work past July first, because then the fiscal year, you know, somebody... Not, not intending to, but, so I guess there was basically a ten-day period there was nobody here in the building. Well, there was no building commissioner.
He was available. He wasn't really, you know, you could call him up or whatever. He would pop by every once in a while, but, yeah, he stopped coming to the building at the beginning of July.
Well, the assistant must know a bit of this business, right? What's his name? I'm going blank.
Oh, Tom.
Tom.
Yeah.
Tom must know about setbacks and, you know, you're gonna need to get a variance, so you're gonna need to, you know, make that all the details.
Hey, Paul?
If you, you have to adjourn.
We're done.
Count it adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?